So. Very good afternoon to you, vellators masters. Today, we will begin a very interesting meeting. So I will just open the meeting officially by clapping once. So, welcome to Pediatric Tipton Ters Masters Club, a place where you can learn and have fun as well. Monday is always the day that I've been waiting throughout the week because we will have a very positive and fun environment to learn more about English. Therefore, I would like to call upon the Ters Masters of meeting today, Ters Masters, I S.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, Ters Master Mutia. So ladies and gentlemen, fellow Ters Masters and distinguished guests, I would like to say, welcome to Pediatric Tipton Ters Master Club, a place where you can learn and have fun together. And also, we would like to say happy fasting Ramadan for all Muslim brother and sister who do this, this worship. And today, I'm I S as table topic, sorry, as Ters Master of the meeting, I will guide you from the beginning until the end of the meeting. And also, I would like to remind you that we have three session. We have prepared speech session and second is table topic session and third is evaluation session. And today's so today's theme is planning is everything. Planning is everything with W O D is disorganized, meaning not properly planned and controlled. And we do believe everything before we go, before we do something, we have to do planning. But be- because without that, something will be disorganized. So before we do that, before we go far, I would like to call our G E today, Ters Master Chandra. Ters Master Chandra, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Tom. Well, good evening fellow Ters Masters and our guests. For the benefit of our members and guests, I am the General Evaluation Today and I conduct the evaluation portion of our meeting. I will be calling on a team to assist me with giving feedback to our speaker speakers. And I will evaluate the entire meeting as well at the end. Now, please help me welcome distinguished Ters Master Yusuf to evaluate the speech given by, oh, Ters Master Mutia herself, actually. So, that should be for the prepared speak, for prepared prepared speech. And Dan, hold on. Next, I let's get right into the regular team which.
Are you there?
Because the next here from the entire this break was going to be grammarian Ters Master Eddie, who's been listening for, yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm audible. Am I audible? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so Mr. and Madame Ters Master, fellow Ters Master and guests, and as a grammarian, it is my responsibility to pay close attention to all speakers, listening carefully to their language usage and I'll take note if any proper language as well as any understanding words, words, saying or any thoughts. Also, as a grammarian, it is my duty to introduce you all here's the word of the day. Our word of the day for today's meeting is disorganized, which mean that not properly planned or controlled. An examples of using this this word in a sentence, for example, is the campaign is hopefully disorganized, was happily disorganized. And another example can be my boss decided that I was unproductive and disorganized. It's bigger is to encourage to use the word of the day and I will give the grammar reports when called open during the meeting and also report on the usage of the word of the day. Thank you and get back to you, our General Evolator, Ters Master Chan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, grammarian. So next, it's going to be the A and W O D counter which tracks with by Ters Master Novita. The time and place is yours.
Thank you, Mr. G E. Hello, good afternoon all. I am Evo. You can call me Evo Novita as well. And today I will be your counter. Well, sometimes when we are speaking, we use some fillers like hmm, ah, or long pauses. So I am listening to you and I will count how many time you use these fillers. And I will be back in the end of the session. Oh yeah, as the W O D counter, I also will count how many time you use the word disorganized today as the grammarian and our Tom has half explained today. Back to you, G E.
Thank you, Vo. Am I pronouncing your your name correctly? Is that Evo or Vo? Evo, okay, thank you. Well, it is important to get your message across in the allowed time and for the meeting to run accor- according to schedule, our timer, which will be carried by, oh, Ters Master Miftah, please, the time and place is yours.
Okay, thank you so much, G E. Now, my name is Miftah and I serve as a ballot counter, as a timer, sorry. As a timer, I will count how much you spend your time during my every session. The first session will be prepared speech session. Ice breaking, icebreaker speech comes from Ters Master Mutia. So four minute will be green, five minutes will be yellow and six minutes will be red. You just have thirty seconds to wrap up your session and also the second session, we have double topic session, one minute will be green, one minute and thirty seconds will be yellow and two minutes will be red. You just have thirty seconds to wrap up your story. And the third session is evaluation session, the heart of Ters Masters International. It will be one, a two minutes in green, two minutes and a half in yellow and also three minutes and red. You just have thirty seconds to wrap up your story, your evaluation. Okay, that's all from me. Back to you.
Thank you, Ters Master Miftah as the timer. Now, last but not least, we should be hearing from the ballot counter, which will conclude the best speaker and etcetera. She will explain to you in in complete place. Time is yours, Ters Master Felicia.
Thank you, Ters Master Chan. Good afternoon, fellow members and welcome guests. My role as a ballot counter is to count the votes for each speaker in each of the following sessions such as prepared speech, table topics and evaluation. And to avoid disorganized votings, I will share the voting later at the chat chat box after the session has finished to vote for the best speaker. So please place your vote there. And at the end of the meeting, I will announce the winners of the votes. That's all from me. Back to you, G E.
Thank you ballot counter. Now, all of my team is concluded and you guys know which one is which that handles their job today. So in the end, all of us will give our reports, including me, I will conclude everything from from the point that we start to the end. I think that's it from me. Back to you, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Ters Master Chan, for introducing your team member, G E T. Okay, again, welcome to Pediatric Tipton Ters Circle Club. And today's theme is planning is everything. And the word of the day today is disorganized, disorganized. So don't forget to use disorganized as fr- as frequent as possible. And without further ado, we will going to move to prepared speech session. So I would like to call the evaluator that will be evaluate, that that will evaluate the prepared speech speaker today, D T M Yusuf Chandra. The screen is yours.
Thank you very much, Ters Master of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, this afternoon, I'll be evaluating Ters Master Mutia with the icebreaker and the time will be four to six minutes. Ters Master will be a slow learner. Purpose of her project is to introduce herself to the club and learn the basic structure of a public speech. Ters Master Mutia, a slow learner, a slow learner, Ters Masters Mutia. Stage is yours.
Who wants, who wonder if the mistakes that you have made or the end of the world? Vellators, masters and guests, if you are a perfectionist, please unmute yourself and make a sound me. Are you perfectionist?
Me, me.
Oh, yes. I could see that hundreds of people attending the meeting today are perfectionists. Speaking of which, I used to be a diligent perfectionistic student at school in which high achieving students barely tolerate the mistake. And it was truly exhausting. Living a life in pursuit of perfection is extremely consuming. I thought I was a fool every single time I made a mistake, even after getting forty eight correct answers out of fifty questions. And as a foolish perfectionist, I believe that it could have been better. It should not have had happened. Two more correct answers than it would be flawless. Then the thought of it kept repeating on my head again and again. Two more, two more and two more, till a new problem surfaced and another inevitable flow happened. Then I blame myself again and again. And here it was, a vicious circle. And it never ends. To ones who wonder if you are at the end of the world after one single mistake. I truly realized that I was indeed a fool. When everyone else might take four hours to fully comprehend the whole lessons, I might take eight hours. And realizing that I was a fool, I work harder than anyone else. Every morning back then, I woke up four hours early to review the lessons that I got from either my school or workplace. However, after a decade, I was exquisitely exhausted. No matter how hard I worked, I was nowhere in pursuit of perfection. Just nowhere. This it is life and an error is bound to happen. One might try his or her best to avoid a mistake, but the future is unforeseen and there will always be a flaw. Vellators, masters, getting a perfect score is indeed magnificent. Yet being able to accept that oneself is not perfect is beyond magnificent. The wisdom of life doesn't lie on making correct choice every single time you need to, but a wise psychological response on how you deal with it after it happens. Another weird thing happened years ago. I joined many competition and I have won either the first, second or third place. But I hate it when I won the set, when I won the second place, thinking that I could have been the first. But when I won the third place, I was just grateful for even winning the contest. You all believe that silver is better than the bronze, right? But why did I feel more grateful after winning the third instead of the second? Perfectionism is there to blame. Even after getting forty eight correct answers out of fifty, I shouldn't have had regretted that there were two wrong answers. I should have said, I'm a fool today, but I will grow tomorrow. Indeed, life is a process of learning and there will always be a mistake. Believe me, there will always be a mistake. Perfectionism is a disease that poisons my heart. I do not have any ideas how long I will live, but if I keep pursuing a life without flows, it will get me nowhere but a sick soul. Life is just a process. I do not know when my life begins or when it ends. It has already started, but the final hasn't been decided because it is a process. One single mistake is fine. I should have said to myself, I can keep trying and growing. There's a saying from Sansa's start of Game of Thrones that I always remember. I am a slow learner. It is true. But I learned. I am Mutia and I'm a slow learner, but I learned. Over to you, Ters Masters of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ters Master Mutia. It's such a great speech. And ladies and gentlemen, please, one minute of silence to give positive feedback privately directly to Ters Master Mutia or to ballot counter, Ters Master Felicia. Timer, please, one minute of silence, start. One minute is up.
You're still unmuted.
Okay, okay. Thank you, timer. So, okay, is Tiamutia eligible to be best speaker today?
Yes, she is eligible to be our winner for today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, timer. So it means Ters Master Mutia automatically become the best, the best prepared speech, the best prepared speech of today. Yeah, yeah, congratulations. Okay, now, we are going to move to next session, that's table topic session, which lead mean by Ters Master Mutia. Ters Master Mutia, take your time.
Hello, vellators, masters. Now it's time for the table topic session. And the theme of the day is planning is everything. And do not forget to use the word of the day is organized. And if you are new to the Ters Masters meeting, so table topic session is a session where everyone can join and participate in the sessions. You simply raise your hand or check your name into the chat box so that you can participate. When you raise your hand, you can choose any picture that you would like to have, either plan, a camera, map, a piggy bank and many others, and there will be a questions right after it. And after the questions, you need to deliver a speech based on the question for one to two minutes. So who's the first speaker? Is everyone ready? Says would like to be the first. Ters Master Evo, Evo, would you like to try? All right, so that guest could see how a table topic will go. So, which picture would you like to have?
Um, how about book?
Book? Where is the, there's no book, it's a passport.
No, there's no book. Okay, I'm so sorry. I want ticket then.
Oh, a ticket. I would like to have a ticket.
Yes.
Ters Master Evo, what's the craziest and the most spontaneous thing you have ever done? What's the craziest and the most spontaneous thing you have ever done, Ters Masters Evo?
I have to need some time to think about it because I'm not a rest day. Give me five seconds to think about it, please.
Sure.
Yeah. All right, and I'm ready now. Wow. Well, although I am not a big planner, I'm not very good in planning everything, but in terms of this organized idea, I'm also not good at it. Although that I consider that I am quite a spontaneous person, but to do some crazy things is out of my list. So, um, I just did crazy thing because I really had to do it. For example, when I was in senior high school, my headmaster at that time closed the gate too early. For example, if we enter the school at seven, at seven, at five to seven, he will just close it. Will just close it. So they those latecomers will be stuck on the behind that day. So there is a time when I climbed the gate, I thought nobody seen me, I thought nobody saw me. But apparently, my sociology teacher was there. So he called me, he asked, what did you do? What, what, what are you doing? I said, I'm so sorry, but you have to save me. I really like this lesson. I cannot miss it. So please allow me, sir, please allow me to enter my class. And he said, okay, so what would you give me? So I bribe him. With, so good if I'm not mistaken at that time. Well, I lost my money, my pocket money, but it worth it because I like that that lesson. So I think it's quite crazy to bribe your teacher when you were young. But it worth it. And for me, it was crazy. So back to you. Thank you.
Wow, Ters Master Evo, you are so brave that you climb the gate and even bribe your teacher.
I'm a criminal.
I couldn't have imagined you doing that. I mean, you could just go home, go back to home. Why did you do it? No.
Yeah, the teacher was handsome at that time.
I would like to ask first. I'm breaking, my signal is breaking. Yes, no worries, Ters Master Evo. So I would like to ask our perspective, Ters Master Mega. Would you like to participate in this table topic session?
Yeah, all right.
So which picture would you like to choose? The most important thing during a travel is?
I'll choose GPS.
Where's the GPS compass? Yes, this one?
Number three.
Oh, number three is a map. Oh, it's a map. Okay. Wait for a second. Getting organized is easy. Staying organized requires discipline. Getting organized is easy. Staying organized requires disciplined perspective to Ters Masters Mega.
Okay, uh, thank you. Let me try to answer the sentences. Actually, I am a planner person and I come to be unplanned person because everything for me should be planned well because, uh, I am not a deadliner. And I think talking to me, well, plan it is a better than unplanned. Uh, because with a plan it, uh, well planned, we can end up alright, we can be, we can do a lot of our activities smoothly and also there is no skip activity and we can arrange and also we can plan how it should be and how it should be done. And also, we ha- we also can plan, uh, what the, the, what the activity that we ha- we should done when we plan our activity, uh, well. And also, uh, we can try, uh, or we can try before, uh, the the time is, uh, the before, before the activity in the place. So we can try and error also with the organized, uh, point.
Wow, very nice answer, perspective to Ters Masters Mega. I believe that there are advantages and disadvantages of being a well-planned person. And being organized makes you stay on the focus because things sometimes are out of control. And it's very nice to have plan A, plan B and to plan Z, right? Okay then, I would like to ask our next speaker, perspective Ters Master Winner. Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
So would you like to show me your smile?
I was, I'm sorry, I cannot, my camera.
Okay, no worries then. So wait for a second. Wait. Which picture would you like to have?
Back.
Back, okay, back. Back. Okay, back is the most important thing to oh, perspective TOS Master Winner. Life is what happens while you are busy making plans. Life is what happens while you are busy making plans. Perspective TOS Masters Winner.
Um, okay. Um, uh before, then I wanna disclaimer first. Uh, I'm just sorry, uh my English is really bad and so I, I like, uh vocabulary is not in my, so yeah, that's why I'm doing here. Okay, okay, let's start. Uh, life is what happens while um I'm busy with uh plans. Um actually, um agree and disagree. Um, I mean that when I'm, when I'm, when I'm, when I'm uh, when I do the, when I do planning as well, but then the, 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 the life just cannot happen what I plan. So so yeah, so that's why I, 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 I like disagree. I mean like so-so. Um, so uh at the end, I just like uh of uh like, wait, wait. It, it's hard to, to, to translate with the English word. Uh, at the end, my life is just like uh flow with the situation that came out in, in my life. So yeah, something like that. Thank you.
Yes, no worries. Perspective TOS Master Winner. We are here, are learning. We are not an expert here. We just learn week by week and then we get better each week. And yes, sometimes things are out of control. And the best thing that we can do is to make plan and, you know, sometimes it just we just need to let it go. Because life just flows. And now I would like to have our next speaker, TOS Master Felicia. Would you like to try?
Sure, sure.
Say which picture?
The cam- camera.
Camera, yes. TOS Masters Felicia, itinerary versus spontaneity, how should you travel? Itinerary versus spontaneity, how should you travel, TOS Masters Felicia?
Thank you so much, TOS Master Mutia. Actually, uh there is a very hard question to answer. Because I used to uh make itinerary for if I want to go to somewhere so I can uh travel organically. But um when we uh make itinerary or make plannings to do something, uh many, many things that uh plans didn't go well, plans go unorganized. And we have to make uh spontaneous action. And sometimes with my friends also, when we try to plan uh and uh suddenly somebody say uh they cannot uh go uh and we have to make spontaneous, uh we have to cancel the plan. And just uh in one day later, when we don't uh plan, uh we can go spontaneously. So I think uh it itinerary or planning is very important in some uh reason. So we can make uh so we can travel, uh we can uh make uh the time effi- efficient. But sometimes uh many things go uh not in our, not as uh our plan. So we have to make spontaneous action. I think that's all from me. Thank you.
Indeed, making plans for a travel is important because we are going to a land we have never gone before. And it's quite terrifying without knowing nothing. What's the places like and what's the people? And but the spontaneity is also important because you will discover lots of things because of those spontaneous acts during your travel. Is it right? So yes, now I will ask our next speaker, TOS Masters Eddie. It's been a very long time since you've joined the table topic session. Would you like to try?
Yes, let me try one. So, so what about piggy bank? Piggy, piggy, piggy bank, right?
Yes, it's a piggy bank. Of course, you need money to go and travel.
Yeah.
TOS Master Eddie, do you still find the calm in the chaos? Do you still find the calm in the chaos, TOS Masters Eddie?
Yes, I think it's I through, I agree with this one. Uh, I still find the calm in my case, but not all the situation that I can deal with that much. So for examples, if I plan to go to a somewhere with my friends, then I think that I need to organize all the itinerary. So where we uh, how, how much money that we have to spend and uh how long the day that we have to be there. But when it comes to the, the real situation, then the plans uh doesn't go well. So I try to become, because even though I uh cannot even control my mind, then everything is getting me uh worse. And not all, everyone can do this one. Because uh people who uh have a problem with uh their minds, sometimes they cannot think perfectly. So thinking perfectly is needed when you are not in your situation. For example, that I, I said previously. So all in all, I would like to say that if someday you find, uh you expect unexpected, uh it just, just expect unexpected things. And every things uh will help you go calm even though you are in the uncertain situation. Get back to you, our TOS Master uh meeting, TTM. Mutia, thank you very much.
Yes, TOS Master Eddie, but I think it is quite hard to find a calm in the chaos. You need to be perfectly well and your mind to think straight, how to solve and the problems and so many else. And I would like to have TOS Masters IAS. Would you like to try?
Yes, I want to try.
So which saying?
Impulse.
Do you wanna have on your travel compass? Okay. TOS Masters IAS. One of the advantages of being disorganized is that one is always having surprising discoveries. One of the advantages of being disorganized is that one is always having surprising discoveries. TOS Masters IAS.
Okay. Yes, I agree with that statement. One of advantage is we will discover some, something surprise in the journey. But I, I usually do some preparation. I do usually some planning before I do something. Because in my point of view, if we do something without any preparation, it will be disorganized. And maybe it, it's quite, it's quite hard to me to do, to do that. So before we go, I, uh I usually open the map and maybe before we do something, I usually to to open how to do that. And when we, when I do that be- without any preparation, yes, absolutely. I will find something surprise and, and sometimes I will, I will be panicked. How, how come, how come, how come to do that? So maybe it's only we the poor that can do that. Do something without any preparation or do something without any foot planning and it, it's still run smoothly. Okay, back to TOS Master of the Table Topic Masters, TOS Master Mutia.
Yes, I do have the same point as you, TOS Master IAS. When you do not make any plans, you will be surprised, of course. And you're not going to know if it is a happy surprise or it is a frightening surprise. Because things that is out of good drawl and are in unexpected. Everyone will be panicked without having a plans. And now can we have, this thing is TOS Master Yusuf is our next speaker for the table topic session?
Okay, I will try. Which number is still available?
The plane.
The plane, okay.
Okay, the plane by Yusuf. This thing is TOS Master Yusuf. By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail. By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail. This thing is TOS Masters Yusuf.
Yes, I do agree with that statement. By failing to prepare, you prepare to fail. Let me give you an example. When you are traveling by plane, let's say you are traveling from Bandung to Jakarta. You have to prepare enough time. Why? Because we never know what is going to happen on the way. Sometime the traffic jam happen everywhere. I had one experience. I had to catch a flight to Europe. And if the flight was at four o'clock in the evening, in the afternoon. We started a little bit late because we didn't prepare. And what happened? There was some riot on the way there and we were so nervous. Why? Because we won't be there on time and we are going to lose our money. We are not preparing well. We prepare to fail. How much money we are going to lose? From that time on, we said, I said to myself, we have to prepare. Not only for the flight, but for the hotel, for the buses we are going to take in the, in the destination. Because those things are very, very crucial. When we didn't prepare booking the rooms or trying to find out how can I go from one place to the other, it will cause you a failure. So ladies and gentlemen, if you are trying to travel, please prepare yourself well in advance. Either the flight, the hotel, the places you are going to visit, the transportation around there, it's all very important. Because once you fail, then you will be in very big trouble. Thank you very much. Back to you, TTM.
A flight to Europe is indeed expensive, eh, by Yusuf. And the price you need to pay.
Fifty million for four of us?
Oh, yes. And the price you need to pay. If you do not catch the flight, it will be awesome, by Yusuf. Yes, and next I would like to ask TOS Masters Mitha. Would you like to try? I could be the timer. If you would like to participate in this table topic session?
Of course. Am I visible because there's the sunshine?
Oh.
In my case, I'm shimmering splendid.
Yes, you are, as always.
Okay, cool. I can, uh, I can try. Which one is already choose and which one is?
Still think passport is the only one.
Okay, we'll take passport.
Passport band.
Yes.
Spontaneity is the province of youth. Spontaneity is the province of youth, TOS Masters Mitha.
TOS Masters and guests, now I can see that all of you wants to try this table topic session, is it? Yes, the answer is yes because you want to know more. You know, we want to know how far you can spontaneously speak in front of people, right? Like a pitchback or something like that, or even an interview. We must spontaneously think in thirty seconds, then you must go on with that statement that um spontaneous is a province of youth. That I really agree with that. This is the example, TOS Masters International, where we can spontaneously impromptu speech. And this session means that all of our youth, uh all of a young blood wanna sell as about how spontaneous, uh spontaneity is really suitable with the young blood, the youth people, the youth leader. Maybe some of you with a good experience, with a good, um, what is that? What we call that? Uh with a good spontaneous, um example for the impromptu speeches, I can see some of you have a good leadership session and also a good communis- uh communication. Because with spontaneous things means that you can take more and more your how far you can communicate your uh difficulties to others. Thank you so much. Back to you, TOS Master Mutia. I'm so, okay. Thank you so much. Back to you.
Thank you, TOS Master Mitha, for encouraging everyone to join the table topic session. And the table topic session is truly important to help you guys in an interview, whether it is in school settings or in IELTS as, it helps us a lot because what we do here is a spontaneous speaking. And it's quite hard unless you practice every week and you will have no one to practice but us, the TOS Masters members. And sadly, the table topic session now has ended. So I would like to ask the timer first, are all speakers eligible to be voted?
Oops, it's all eligible to be voted. The detail will be shown in chat box. Thank you.
Yes, so all speakers are eligible to be voted. Later on, TOS Masters Felicia will send you a link so that you can vote. And now I'm going to give my control back to the TOS Masters of the meeting, TOS Masters IAS.
Okay, thank you, TOS Master Mutia and to all speakers today. And I would like to assert you again that table topic session won't make you disorganized. It only make you train to be, uh, to be spontaneous speaker. Yeah, okay. So don't forget to, to come again next week. And, and after this, we are going to move to next session, that's evaluation session. And in this time, I would like to call our GE today, TOS Master John, TOS Master John, time is yours.
Hello. Sorry, my internet is really, really bad right now. So uh finally, we concluded the um prepared speech given by TOS Master Mutia and also the table topic session um led by, also by TOS Master Mutia. Now, it is time in our meeting to um to evaluate, starting from the um, to evaluate, starting from the evaluation from, uh, Toast, distinguished Toastmaster Yusuf. Um, the time is yours.
Thank you very much. GE, Toastmaster Chan. Ladies.
Toastmasters Chan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. The internet is really, really bad. I swear to God. But thank you so much, just, uh, distinguished Toastmaster Yusuf. And I, and I really agree that it is a relatable speech at that. And don't we all a perfectionist at some point in our life? And that's very relatable. All right, so anyways, let's continue to our next um, agenda, which we will hear from the grammarian who's been listening um, for good use of the language for less point for improvement. You may give your report from your place. Your time is yours.
Okay, thank you very much for the time here. So let me share the screen based on what I hear, what I see and what I know for all of us here when performing our speaking. So, there you go. So overall, everyone can speak well, eloquently and also can measure the grammar when they, uh, speak or deliver their responses. However, so I see we need a few improvement on this one. So I find it into this one. The first my note is common mistake. I hear someone say consider to go. So I think it's, uh, when it comes to consider supposed to be followed by F I N G, so consider going. And I consider going to school instead of, uh, you say I consider to go to school because consider supposed to be followed by F I N G. And the next is when we talk about something happened in the past, it's also good if you use the appropriate tenses. Uh, for example, what word are you doing instead of we say, what are you doing, by the way? So because those are correct, but when we talk about something happened in the past and the right one supposed to be used. And also I hear someone say that I am agree and disagree. I think it's you don't need to go with the, uh, am here. So simply say, I agree with this one. Or maybe you can say it is, uh, it is agreed. Okay. And some, some things is good, but I think it's two value here. So instead of you saying it's important to some things, things here is not un- unclear. So it is also good if we, uh, say it is important to some extent. Instead of, uh, we say that it's important to some things. This is the common mistake that I hear during our meeting. And also I know, uh, some sayings and beautiful words here. I hear, uh, one of us say that I am excessively exhausted. This is that I hears and this is a very beautiful phrases. And then I hear someone say that perfectionism is there to blame. And life is a process of learning. Do it properly, then it goes smoothly. And the last from, uh, DTM Yusuf Chan, I said it. Once you fail, so you will face a big trouble. So that's all for my notes about the grammar and get back to you, our general evaluator, Toastmaster Chan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Grammarian. That's a very thorough explanation, uh, and analyz- action that you have presented to us. That is very, very nice. Now, um, let's continue to our A N W O counter, which tracks the use of verbal pauses and also the word of the day. Um, so, uh, Toastmaster Evo, please give your report. The time is yours.
Thank you, GE. Hi all, I am back. I'm about to give you my report about first about the AS that we have, uh, been spoken today. We have spoken today. So, uh, only several people, including me, say many AS. Um, but that's okay. We are learning. The first one is me. I said one A. This master Felicia as the table topic speaker said, uh, um, three times. This master Eddie as the table, table topic speaker said two times and Toastmaster, Toastmaster Miftah, one um and one filler. What do you call that? And well, I am very happy because everyone seems trying to stay disorganized today. Toastmaster Felicia, two times. Toastmaster Ayas as the Tom, four times. Toastmaster Mutia, uh, four times. I, Toastmaster Evo, one. Toastmaster Eddie, two times. And as the table topic speaker, Toastmaster Ayas, one time. However, I note that, uh, everyone tries to stay organized instead of disorganized. So, uh, I think that's a good, uh, good try, everyone. Well, uh, that's all for me. Back to you, GE.
Thank you, uh, Toastmaster Evo. I'm very very surprised that I don't make the list since I is. Let's continue to, uh, the timer. Now that, um, Toastmaster, wait, who is, who's, who's our timer? What is that? Oh, Toastmaster Ti- uh, Miftah, you used to, um, show your face, sorry. So, so, Toastmaster, uh, Miftah will re- will report on how we've done on the time. You may give your report from your place. Time and place is yours. Toastmaster Miftah, are you there?
His app for sections, but I believe he has reported on the chat box.
Oh, yeah, he did. Oh, yeah, okay. Well, okay, so it's disclosed already. Let's, I think we might as well just move on to, um, the uh, ballot counter. Miss Felicia, please, time is yours.
Okay, thank you, GE. So I will share my screen.
That counter, I think at the end. So, uh, now you evaluate.
Oh, yeah, so I can, I can give my evaluation first?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right then. Thank you.
Then that counter.
Thank you, Tom. All right, so I'm going to give, I'm going, I'm going, I promise it's going to be, to be very efficient, okay? So the evaluation for today, and I'm sorry, my voices will be breaking at some point because the internet is really, uh, bad today. So, was meeting on time, I might as well call the timer today, which he, he responsible for the time, but I think that we pretty much on time, well, my one minutes, um, uh, spared that it's already hitting five and one minutes already, but I think that we are already on time today. So we, it, it, it's a good start. And then does it run smoothly? It's, is, is the agenda followed, which is actually, this is what I want to tell, uh, by, uh, the pads. Uh, Toastmaster, usually you guys post me the agenda, but today surprisingly you don't. In which it's okay though, maybe you're busy, but usually it's, it's actually a good, uh, a good routine that you have to get that organized, but today I cut you some slack. I think that should be fine. And the guests are very well introduced. This is very, very clear in the beginning. And also the introduction, which, which is done by me. I hope I'm doing a great, a nice job already. And then, uh, the speakers, uh, it's already concluded, table topics already. And then also, the, I, the, the report from the grammarian is very thorough. The R N W O counter also, and then also the timer, uh, which he already stated. But I would like him to declare kind of, but it's not here, it's okay. But most important of it all, do we have fun today? The answer is, yes, we did. And especially by the, um, by the prepared speaker and also the table topic session, which is very, very fun. Just a little note for the table topic, I think. When you present it in such a way, it is very unique, by the way, by you representing to, uh, for the people to choose from the icons of the passport and the, and the planes and etcetera, which very relatable to our teams today. But also, if you could just get, give a mark to the pictures that already taken, that should be helpful for the next person to not if to, to notify, you know, it, it should let them know that, oh, it's already taken. Because back then, I don't think that, that uh, that there's some confusion to some, uh, later spe- speaker of the ballot, oh, oh, sorry, of the table topic session, that they're kind of confused, which, which, which are the ones that are already taken and which is not. Okay, I think that I concluded my evaluation. So next, we should go on to ballot counter to close this, uh, evaluation session. Please, Miss Felicia.
Okay, thank you, GE. Uh, so now I will, uh, share my screen. Wait a minute. Okay. Okay, so now I will announce, uh, the Hall of Fame. For the best speaker for the prepared speech is, of course, Tem Mutia. Congratulations. And the best speaker for the table topic sessions, we have two, uh, best speaker. So the first one is Tem Evo, congratulations. And the second best speaker is the Omega. Okay, and the best speaker for evaluation goes to DTM Yusuf. Okay, that, uh, so congratulations for all the winners. And for all, uh, for all the rest, there's still so many times to become the next winner. That's all from me. Thank you, Tem Chan.
Okay, welcome. Oh, yeah, you're welcome. As for Felicia, wow, that was exciting. Congratulations to the winner. And also that is very true. There will always be next time to be the next best speaker. So keep unmotivated. Well, uh, that session just concluded our meeting today, uh, our, uh, evaluation session for today. Well, back to you, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, GE. Yes, and finally, we arrive at the final session that we closing session. So before that, I would like to say thank you very much for all speaker, all Toastmaster member, all guests and all all-takers who had attend and take role today. And I see your, your smiling and it's, it's really, really, what, energized everyone who see that. And we hope we can meet next week on Pediacip Toastmasters Club regular meeting. And, and after that, I'm so, I would like to, sorry, because if you had made a mistake. And lastly, I would like to give control back to Madam President, Toastmaster Mutia.
Thank you, Toastmasters Ayas for leading this meeting. And I would like to say hi to our view guest guest here. Seems that this Master Omega is the only one left. Hello, Toastmasters Omega. Is it your first time coming to Pats?
Yes, hello. This is my first time. Actually, Tem Evo asked me to join this. Thank you so much.
So, Toastmaster Evo is a friend of yours.
It's my idol.
Are you? You're idol. Are you the coworker?
No, we, we friends from, uh, college, from college.
Oh, I see. So you, you studied at University of Indonesia as well?
Yeah.
Oh, what major did you have?
I think it goes to you, Toastmaster Omega.
So what graduate program did you study?
We are, uh, me and Evo, uh, two linguistic for our mind.
What linguistic of French, English, or?
English language teaching, some kind of.
Seriously, I used to be an English literature student back then at two thousand and fourteen. But after a year, I dropped out. So when did you have your graduate program? Because I might be the younger generation.
Oh, well, we answered, um, in two thousand and ten, Toastmaster Mutia.
Two thousand and fifteen.
Two thousand and fifteen, but we, we took the master degrees, educational linguistics. Maybe that's why we didn't met at that time?
Yes, I see that. But I believe that some of my teachers might be yours as well.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's nice to have you guys here, to see you here as a, as a senior itself on my campus. Okay, then. So how did you find about the meeting today, Toastmasters Omega?
Sorry, sorry, my internet is bad. Can you repeat your question?
Yes, so did you enjoy the meeting today?
Yeah, of course. I very enjoyed the meeting and I liked your topic today.
Wow.
That is freezing.
Always have this. Who's freezing? My freezing or this must make it freezing. So yes, you're always welcome to come to Pediacip Toastmasters Club meeting on Monday at four P M, Monday at four P M. And I would like to give some appreciations to all our visiting Toastmasters here, Toastmasters Evo and as well Toastmasters Chan. Thank you, Toastmaster Evo, for coming, although you're still out there at a cafe. You're still helping us today. So is your home club, University of Indonesia, Toastmasters Club, or do you have any other clubs? Toastmasters.
No, it's, it's O E T M C.
Sorry, what is it?
It's O E, uh, T M C, yes.
Oh, only with the M C because? Yes?
Yeah, because I was student there, so. I don't know, I just, I was just thick.
Yeah, it's hard to recognize one who often goes clubbing because I get confused because I saw you there and I saw you in another club and it's quite confusing.
Yeah.
See which club are you from? Thank you, Toastmaster Chan.
I'm sorry, when you mentioned clubbing, in my head, you're going into like holy cat, you know, like, like, like that, this has been going on to the beginning and I'm like, wow, these people are lit. But then I realized, oh, you meant clubbing as in Toastmasters Club. Is that what you're trying to say? Well, okay, this is a whole, whole misunderstanding. My, my mind has been so everywhere lately. Wow, I, I didn't know it's, it's a term.
Yeah, you should have joined club being Toastmasters Chan. I should have invited you to, uh, traveling Toastmasters, I guess, so that you can go to another club.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes. Because it is always nice to meet new people there from another country. And I would like to give an appreciation to Toastmasters Felicia today, who did very well for the first time in a ballot counter. Yay. You did a very great job, Toastmasters Felicia.
Thank you.
It's done very smoothly. And how did you feel today as a ballot counter?
Nervous. What? Okay, I'll try.
I would like to have a question to Toastmaster Felicia, please, if I, if I may. Uh, Toastmaster Felicia, have you ever come to, uh, the point where, where people like come at you and then, oh, your name Felicia? Well, do you know the meme of Bye Felicia? Did you know that?
No, I don't know.
The Bye Felicia meme? You don't know that? All right then. The Bye Felicia meme? You don't know that? All right then. Well, yeah, but it exists. So Bye Felicia. No, that's a meme, sorry. And my internet is unstable, so it's not funny. Okay, well, thank you.
It's quite funny. And can everyone please turn on the cameras so that we can take a photo? Are you guys ready? Toastmasters Ayas, would you mind helping us to take a picture? Please make a pose of being in a chaos.
Yes. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, hold, hold the post. Okay. Three, two, one. Again, again, three, two, one. Okay, stop.
Okay, have a good Monday, everyone. I will close the meeting by clapping try.